My page, are we on? Are we ready to go?
You're ready.
If I could ask everyone to please rise. We have Pastor Franco with Messiah Christian Fellowship here, going to lead us in the invocation. Thank you for being here, Pastor. And then stay for the pledges, please.
Praise the Lord, I want to read a quick scripture. The Bible says, "When Solomon spoke to God, he said these words: 'Your servant is among your people whom you have chosen, a great people, who are too many to be numbered or counted. So give your servant an understanding mind and a hearing heart with which to judge your people, so that I may discern between good and evil; for who is able to judge and rule this great people of yours?'" Bow your head and close your eyes. Father, we come before you with hearts of full praise, acknowledging you as a source of wisdom and authority and guidance, your sovereign over all of us, and we thank you for your divine plan in raising up leaders to serve in positions of influence. We're grateful for the recent elections, for the new officials who will serve the community of Corpus Christi, the body of Christ. We thank you for being willing, for them being willing to step into these roles and their dedication that is evident. Father, Father, just as Solomon sought wisdom to govern you people, we humbly ask that you would grant these newly elected officials a discerning heart, give them wisdom beyond their own understanding, so that they may govern with justice and righteousness. Help them to distinguish between right and wrong, to make decisions that will promote welfare of community, to always seek what is good and true in your eyes. Father, guide them, Lord, in every decision that they make. We pray especially for wisdom in the areas that will impact the most vulnerable among us. Let them be champions of justice, fairness, and righteousness in all deliberations, Father, as your word promises. We ask that if they lack wisdom, you would give it to them generously without fault. We also pray for protection over these officials, their families, their staff, as they embark on this new journey. Grant them strength, resilience, courage to face every challenge with integrity. May they not grow weary in doing good, but remain steadfast in their service. Lord, we ask that you would instill in them a spirit of humility and servanthood. May they always put the needs of people above their own interests, serving with a heart that is sensitive to the needs of those that are called to serve. Father, we dedicate their term to you, all the officials, Father, that are presently serving. We ask that everything they do would bring glory to your name. Be for the good of the people that serve, that they serve. May your purpose be fulfilled through them, and may your Lord, may your name be honored in every decision and action and policy. Father, we give you thanks and praise for all these things. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. We have all commissioners present. It is 9:10. We are at 901 Leopard Street in the Nuasis County Courthouse, and I will certify that a quorum is present, and I call this meeting to order. Do we have any announcements on disclosure of conflicts of interest, please? If any commissioner finds that they have one later on one of the agenda items, you may do so and note it at that time. Item E, adopt the following resolution in recognition of Special Hearts Day, December the 8th, 2024, and Frances is going to read that one.
In recognition of Special Hearts Day, December 8th, 2024. Whereas Special Hearts in the Arts provides individuals with special needs the opportunity to explore art, music, dance, and theater, which gives our community the gift of experiencing the unique and special abilities each talented special heart expresses with joy. And whereas Special Hearts Day allows special hearts in the arts, a community platform to share their gift to the world through their own unique abilities. They rejoice in not just one special ability, but all special abilities, whether it be in sports, fine arts, or other unique gifts that each special heart proudly and unselfishly offers. Special Hearts Day allows everyone to embrace a reality that focuses on special abilities instead of disabilities. And whereas Special Hearts Day is a celebration of special hearts, families, volunteers, and community members that provide our county the opportunity to understand that special hearts are remarkable contributors to the greatness of our community. Special Hearts Day celebrates the blessing and gifts of each special heart in our wonderful community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Commissioners' Court of the Nuasis County does hereby formally designate December 8th, 2024 as Special Hearts Day.
Thank you, Frances. We have a motion.
Second.
Second, sorry, Commissioner. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes, and I think Sharon and Idley are here. Do you want to speak on behalf of us? Please. We're excited to have you here.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having us. And also, Commissioners, you guys beat everybody else on doing the proclamation, so thank you. We do have a state now, Special Hearts Day is a state holiday where the special hearts are recognized for their special abilities. Two of our special hearts have come. This is Amber over here, and this is Vanessa. She's a little, she needs a stepladder so you can see her. But they are both in our Ballet Folklorico class, and we perform all over the city. If you ever need performances, we do art, music, theater, dance. But we also want to celebrate the special hearts that are in athletics, in work skills, and all this. We say special abilities, we do not say disabilities.
Absolutely.
But thank you so much for honoring us and having us here. Do you want to say anything about us?
Thank you, everyone, for communicating and appreciate everything.
Do you want to say anything, Amber? You want to just smile? She has the best smile. Okay? You okay? Okay. Just want to thank you, thank you so much, Commissioners, for caring for us in your prayers and your help financially. Thank you. And also in coming to our events. We appreciate that a lot. So God bless you all.
God bless you all for your work and everything. And thank you both for being here today, too, as well. We would love to take a picture with you.
I also want to appreciate them, Judge, for what they do. It's not easy. So thank you all very much for what you do there.
Thank you. Are we getting a picture now?
Yes, please.
Okay, go on up front so we can get the picture so the rest of the people can have their stuff. While everybody's going up there, I forgot we started a new program called The Remarkables. If any of you need superheroes, we have superheroes now, and we go around the city to hospitals, nursing homes, and elementary schools and perform for the kids, and they're called The Remarkables.
Thank you.
What is this? Oh, okay. I think there's no action allowed. I think we're going to have to add it to our legislative priorities. Okay. Okay, okay. Thank you again for being here. Moving on to item F, public comment. I have the list here. Mr. Stephen Pierce, you're first. If you would just state your name, there's no need for an address. We've been corrected on that, but if you'd just state your name, we appreciate it.
That's good, thank you. Again, my name is Stephen Pierce. Judge, Commissioners, I really appreciate the opportunity to just introduce myself this morning. I'm a 26-year veteran of the United States Army. I'm moving here to Nuasis County, so I'm a transplant. I've been here for about three and a half years. I decided to retire here with my family, thank you. And since we're going to be here, we wanted to do something that was worth doing. As you can imagine, as a Army veteran, I'm very mission-focused, and since I've been here, I've looked for an opportunity to now take all those skills and that drive as an infantry officer, to bring it here to the county to be able to help the community. And I've just been recently hired as the Executive Director for Habitat for Humanity here in Corpus Christi. So as you can already know, the housing market is way beyond the ability of most people to be able to purchase a house. Not only that, but it's even more outside of the scope of somebody to purchase a house if you're already low-income. And so that's what Habitat for Humanity does, is it helps people to understand and find that dream of owning a house. But more importantly, we help them to discover dignity of owning a house. So the kind of the spiritual leader, the person who kind of helped to shape how Habitat helps the poor, Clarence Jordan is his name, out of Georgia back in the 50s and into the 70s. He had a quote that said that the poor, they don't need charity, they need capital. And they don't need social workers, they need coworkers. And that's what Habitat for Humanity does, and that's what I'm going to do in my role as Executive Director for Habitat for Humanity. I'm going to help those people who need homes, who need the ability to step into an environment in which they can work, send their kids to school, and to then thrive. We're going to give them the opportunity to apply and then move into a home, and then be in a community of not only a community of other people who can help them, but they're going to be a part of the Habitat family. And we're going to help them to grow their family and grow their opportunities. So I'm just here this morning to say hello and to introduce myself and to say that I am here to help the same county that you serve, and I'm going to do that in a role coming from a military background with a very specific mission, and that's to help the people in Nuasis County who cannot afford to get into the housing market, to be able to get into a home, and more importantly, to help afford them dignity and afford their family dignity of being a homeowner. So I thank you for your time this morning. I've got cards that have been distributed to you, and if you would like for me to come and speak with you personally, I'm very happy to do that, or for any other reason or any way I can serve you, please let me know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike Pusley?
I had, Teresa, did you already hand out the document? Okay. Good morning, Honorable Judge Scott and Commissioners. Thank you very much for allowing me to come here this morning. My name is Mike Pusley. I reside here in Nuasis County, Corpus Christi, Texas. I've presented each of you a document, and I'll just briefly summarize the document. I'm here this morning to ask that some of the items on your agenda today be tabled until the 1st of January, when I will take office as the Commissioner for Precinct 1. This is a courtesy that has been extended to other Commissioners in the past and to county judges as well. Each of these items has either a relevance or significant decisions that need to be made for projects for which I will be responsible for supervising in my capacity as the County Commissioner for Precinct 1. So if you would please, and I apologize for the typos I discovered in the parking lot this morning and had to change with a pencil, but anyway, if you would please review that document, and I would appreciate your consideration for tabling these items until January. Thank you very much.
Ron Wolf?
Good morning. My name is Ron Wolf. I'm the Secretary and Treasurer of the Beachview Estates Homeowners Association. I'm here, my comments are related to item 3A2. I am also a homeowner adjacent to this parcel. I want to thank Commissioner Chesney and the court, and also Cliff Schlebach and the Beach Management Advisory Committee for their time and effort on this issue, and for including us as affected neighbors in the process. There are several things that went wrong with this process from a while back that I think is important to point out. First, when the initial permit work for this was done in 2003, prior to Mr. David, the current owner, purchasing the property, the permit request had two parts to it. Part one was to fill five wetlands landward of the 350-foot setback, and part two was to fill two wetlands seaward of the 350-foot setback. The BMAC, Beach Management Advisory Committee, spent considerable time and effort to carefully review that request, and they recommended to approve part one and deny part two. When the issue, however, when the issue was presented to the court, BMAC's position was not included and explained, is my understanding, and therefore, their valuable work was not taken into account, and as a result, both parts of that request were approved. My understanding is the court follows BMAC recommendations the vast majority of the time, but in this case, that did not happen. I just think it's important to understand how and why that happened that way, and to make, take whatever action is needed to make sure, hopefully, that it cannot happen again. Second, when the work began, there was tremendous damage that was done by Mr. David, and went on for quite a while before we, as neighbors, reported and stopped it. I think it's important to understand how that happened, and make sure it doesn't happen again, especially now that the work's being done in the critical areas seaward of the 350. The BMAC's preference was to deal with the damage done with a mitigation plan. However, the plan that was submitted to court was a compensation plan, and apparently that mitigation was not an option. That plan has been modified and is before you today. The only reason I've heard why mitigation was not an option was that it would hinder future development. However, Mr. David said many times that he had no plans for development, and that, and so I still don't understand why a mitigation plan was not appropriate. Finally, at our BMAC meeting yesterday, we did express concern about drainage. We've witnessed heavy rains recently, where flooding on the properties that are right next to where the fill occurred, and Mother Nature has wetlands for a reason, so we just ask that that situation be monitored.
Mr. Wolf?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Eric Baggerman?
Good morning, and thank you for your time. Let me share a little bit with you. I'm Eric Baggerman, Amistad Community Health Center, not here for Agenda Item 18, which is part of Amistad as well. But for an update on the Calderon Building from back in September, we approved the lease for us to do primary care out at the Calderon Building in Robstown, and we had planned to open December 2nd. Part of being an FQHC is we have to get everything HERSA-approved. It will be approved, but we're still waiting on HERSA-approval to officially open it as a site. Also having a little bit of trouble with providers. The provider we had lined up is not there, but we do have a backup plan to do, use our providers from Corpus Christi to increase the primary care out there in Robstown. The difficulty in getting providers is why there's shortage out in the rural community, and so that's not a big surprise. We also plan, as soon as we do get the HERSA-approval, to be doing primary psychiatry telehealth, so that we have a number of patients out in that area who can't get to our psychiatrist in Corpus very easily, so we'll use that space as well to get some behavioral health going out there, as well as some potential groups for our behavioral health licensed professional counselors. So that's the update on where we are with that. Also, space-wise, Dr. Khan from the Health Department and I have talked about the space that's laid out in that lease, you know, is where, you know, which is public health and which is primary care. We think it would work very well, and also have talked about some of the collaborations to hopefully have some good medical home right there with the Public Health Department to make it work well. So that was my update, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who didn't have the opportunity to sign up for public comment who wishes to do so now? If there is none, then moving right along. To item G, we, G1, we are going to table, I would make the motion to table and bring back to the December 11th agenda, place it on the regular agenda. It was posted incorrectly, and we have talked to them, and they are fine with it coming back December the 11th.
G?
G1.
G1.
Second, Judge.
We have a motion and a second to table and bring back to the December 11th. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. It's G1. It's in the very beginning. It's the housing, the resolution, right in the very beginning.
Right under public comment, sorry.
A special meeting, you mean?
Sorry.
Yes, but it shouldn't have been a special meeting. It was just a resolution, so in order to keep everything above board, they were fine with us bringing it back and posting it correctly on the December 11th, so. Item number two, the consent agenda. Does any Commissioner have any items they wish to pull? I am going to pull item A. For further comment, discussion, whatever. Any other items on the consent agenda?
Judge, I'd make a motion to approve all items, but item A, under consent?
I'll second your motion.
I have one.
I'm sorry.
J, I'd just like, I'd like to probably just ask a question on J.
I amend my motion to approve all but A and J.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. On item A, I did that one first. I need to table and bring it back to December. The register attached did not print correctly. It is all incorrect, so I don't want to pass something that, it's just the bottom portion, but we're just pulling item A and going to bring it back for the December 11th.
We need to issue payments for the checks. So it's just the check registers for the previously authorized payments of the bills? Those check registers we'll bring back, but the other items, we respectfully request approval.
For the regular veterans, so we're going to go ahead and approve the checks, but not the register that was the item?
No. Okay, so...
This is a separate item then?
Yes.
At the very end, the last...
Yes, it's the last, it's the last, the last three sentences. That's what we're going to, and we'll bring those back on December 11th. But the other items, the, the check registers for the exceptions items payments, the payroll garnishment dates that were due October 11th and 25th, and the payments for vendors on the exceptions list on October 11th, 14th, 18th, 25th, and 28th, and November 1st. Those are all correct. It's just the last three.
So why don't you list what she should table instead of the ones that are right?
Okay, the, it's the previously authorized payments for bills of regular veterans and community support services and special motions dated October 18th.
Perfect. I will amend my motion to table only that portion.
And what about receiving the check registers? Is that the one you're saying?
That will come back on the next, that's...
So we're going to, so you're saying from the word "receive," check registers?
Pass the first portion excluding from "receive," the check registers for the previously authorized payments of the bills for the regular veterans and community support services and special motions, all dated October the 18th.
That needs to be tabled, and what else?
That's it.
Okay, second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item J, Commissioner, you had a question with that one?
We get, on the personnel roster that we get, it's just termination on all of them, so I don't want to mislead somebody, they check records and say somebody was terminated. If they resign or they retire, whatever, I think it should indicate whatever the reason was, instead of termination.
Instead of termination. Mr. Saleh, you're back there. Do you have any, is that the way it pulls up when an employee leaves office, whether it's for termination or resignation or retire? He's saying the register that you print shows all terminations instead of what they actually left for. Can that be, you have to speak in the microphone, sorry, sir.
Yes, I hate for somebody to check and then to say it was terminated.
They all look like they were terminated instead of resigned or retired or anything else.
Good morning, Commissioners. That is correct. When Workday processes a termination, it doesn't acknowledge retirements or involuntary terminations or voluntary terminations. It just classifies them as terminations. However, in our notes in Workday, it specifies what the actual reason is, and it also determines if the employee is eligible for rehire. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, but I'm going to correct it.
Is there a way to correct it? I understand it. It looks like everybody's terminated instead of people have left or retired.
That would be a county auditor answer.
I would.
Lisa?
So HCM, Human Capital Management, is a separate component of Workday from the financial system. There are separate reports for those. It's my understanding that those items are just pulled as a report straight out of Workday, so it would require someone going in and looking at each note for every employee that's separating, and then going in and modifying a report that's generated from Workday manually. There's no way to modify that in Workday, how it's generated.
Well, you just said someone could go in and do it.
Yeah, manually, yes, that's correct.
I would make a motion that it manually be done to reflect what it actually is.
Yes. We have a motion and a second.
And then who would do that?
That, that would be a function of HR.
Melinda just walked in. She might have something.
And I think Teresa wanted to add something, too, Judge, I don't know what, but...
I was just going to add what you stated about that the report can be updated to reflect the correct exit.
Yes.
On the third from the last...
Hold the microphone down, I'm sorry.
On the third from the last column under action type, it says resignation or termination, and then the reason we'll give, whether it was job abandonment, termination, it gives the breakdown of why they left.
So basically, sorry, Judge.
On the report that's provided?
Yes.
Which number is that, J? Which number is that, J?
But Commissioner's point is well made. A lot of people don't look past that. So as long as it can be manually updated, I, I think we should, and I think it ought to reflect accurately the reasons.
The reasons are there.
Right, but at the end of the day, it still says termination at the end.
No. If you look on the la, at that, under action type, the very first one says resignation. The second one is termination.
Right, but it, if they weren't, what Commissioner's making the point of is they weren't terminated. Termination is a term in the world we live in that means you were fired or you were terminated.
Right, and the ones that are listed were terminated. It's, the termination, the, the second one was a termination during probationary period, which is listed there.
Okay. I just want to make sure, all I'm, the motion is just to make sure that the report reflects what Mr. Saleh said before you came in was different. He said, "It's a Workday function, and it is what it is." So.
The, the task that we do is called a termination. But it, it does actually list the, the action, whether it was a resignation or a termination on the report. And then on the, it goes into the reason on the second to the last column, which is, first one was job abandonment, which was a resignation. Second was a termination, and it was a termination during probationary period.
And that's kind of confusing when you have termination on one, you have resignation on the other one. So which one is it? If it's just resignation, can, can it reflect resignation on all of it?
Well, it gives the reason why they're resigned. Sometimes they'll, they've resigned because they moved. Sometimes they found another position somewhere else. So it goes one step further into the reason for whether it was a termination or a separation, or, or a resignation.
Is there any way to separate those lists for people that retire or really resign and people that are terminated? I mean, there has to be a simpler way.
We should be able to do that. So just one for resignations and one for terminations and one for retirements?
How, I mean, whatever we can do to make it. Because people, I understand what the Commissioner's talking about. They're not going to read through the fine print and read all the details about where someone went. But it looks like, at first glance, it's a termination.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we can do three different reports.
Yeah, I mean, because it just says under business process, termination, and then you have to go all the way to the right to find out why.
Or maybe the, that should be the first column.
Or we could change the columns.
Change the columns and put the last at the end.
Or would you all prefer separate reports?
Change the columns. As long as you see it initially, it's fine with me at the beginning, not at the end.
Okay. Make it clear.
Maybe you just change the term to end of employment instead of the word termination. End of employment could go into that category, and you don't have the word termination, which is going to set some people off. I mean, it's, it's a semantical issue, you know, it's business process or.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if we can do that, but we'll, I'll see what we can do.
Let me just add that I spoke on numerous occasions with Julia Mendoza and Harry Horak regarding this report that Commissioner Gonzalez wanted to kind of reflect our previous report. And I was advised that this was the only way it could be set up. Now, if there's anything more that can be done, Lisa, please let me know that, but that's what I was informed. And this was the closest that they were able to get to the request for it to mirror the previous report.
We should be able to just hide that column so that the only action that they see is the two columns at the end?
Right.
Just hide that one column so that it's not reflected.
Because we're going to see it in the end.
Yes, exactly. So there's no confusion.
Are you making a motion to pass then now, Commissioner?
I think the motion was just to clean up the report that.
Yes.
Takes out the word termination or whatever the case may be to where it's more reflective. Because if you, the way that report reads is the first, it's, termination is the first column you see, and then all the way to the right as you go over there. So maybe it's just changing the terminology to say end of employment.
Approve this personnel action, though, and clean up the report.
And then, and then all the way to the right, you put termination or resignation or job abandonment or whatever it is, just so it's an accurate report. So however you want to clean that up, I would definitely make that as part of the motion, is to clean that up to where termination is taken out in some other term, end of employment, or a term that the system will take is taken out of that.
And approve the personnel action that is before us.
Aye, yeah, as amended.
As amended, yes.
Is that okay, Commissioner Gonzalez? I get what you want.
As long as it, look, I just don't want somebody to pull the record and just look at that column. It was terminated.
So we have a motion. Are you seconding that then? Commissioner Gonzalez will second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Moving on to our regular agenda. Item 3A1. Discuss and consider rescinding the prior approval of the large-scale dune protection permit from September the 11th and discuss and consider the approval of the revised application for a large-scale dune protection permit. I understand the GLO has requested this walkover to be shortened, and it has come back, hey.
Is Christine presenting this one? Are you doing this?
Christine or Scott? Are you here for this one, Christine? The 3A1, we surprised you.
Good timing.
Talking about Laguna Shores?
It's the walkover that the, the GLO requested to be shortened, and that has been done. I understand. Everything is moving forward now.
Yeah, after the, this was approved at the last Commissioner's Court meeting, we received another letter from the GLO asking us to move it, asking the applicant to move it closer to the vegetation line, the post-Alberto one. So their engineers were able to shorten it, bring it back, and still meet all the standards. So that's the only revision to this application since the last time we saw it, is that it is shortened and brought closer in. So it is not as far out, won't impede the driveline, and meets all the other requirements of the county plan.
There's no opposition to this that you're aware of at this point?
No, sir.
Okay, I would move, or I would move the, sorry, to just, that we can't even talk, that we rescind the prior approval of the large-scale dune protection permit, DPP 202 40311, and then approve the revised application for the large-scale dune permit with an exemption request for construction of a walkover seaward of a 350-foot building setback line required for the proposed construction of these structures.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number two, discuss and consider approval of an exemption request for dune impact compensation for violations for 426 cubic yards of dunes. And I believe Commissioner Chesney, this is your item, or is this, are you doing this one?
Yeah, it's both of ours.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this was, this, compensation for a violation to impacted dunes that were not permitted to be impacted. The head commissioners' court had approved a dune permit application to allow fill within non-jurisdictional wetlands landward of the 350 and granting the exemption for the fill of portions of wetlands that were seaward of the 350 during that construction. They impacted some other dunes, and this is their compensation for those impacts. It was tabled a month ago, two or, two or three Commissioner's Court meetings ago, sorry, to be able to have more time to discuss it because BMAC did not support the application. So the applicant revised to the compensation dune that was presented at Commissioner's Court last time. It was to more perpendicular compensation dunes within their wetland footprint that they had permission to fill. And now they're turned to be more parallel with the existing dune system, beachfront dune system, to provide better erosion and storm protection. So that's.
Judge, this was the one where we, we tabled it, and I convened a meeting of the affected parties, including the homeowners next door, Mr. David, and Cliff Schlebach from the BMAC committee. We came up with what was basically a compromise solution on this. Mr. David had also volunteered kindly, and we appreciate it, to pay the county for someone to oversee the construction so that we didn't have the same issues regarding that before. It was a very favorable meeting. The BMAC met this week, I think it was this week, and had an emergency meeting.
On Monday.
And, and they did approve this compromise by a six-to-one vote. I would, as part of the motion to pass this, also charge Christine with coming up with whoever the person is or persons or company, whether it's you, I don't, you know, whatever is acceptable to you to, to oversee this. And that, we'll work that out with Mr. David. So I would make a motion to pass this compromise position. It does really, actually, it, I think it's a better solution. It provides more protection than even going back to where it was in the past. So I think that's important. So we did really, I think, come out of this with a, a win situation. I'm very appreciative of all the parties who were there. It was a little bit of an intense meeting, but sometimes intensity provides results, and this one was definitely one that provided results. So as part of the motion, I do want to make sure that it's in the record that Christine will facilitate the hiring of and the working with Mr. David for the compensation to the county for overseeing the construction when that happens.
Yes, sir.
That'd be my motion, Judge.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second, Commissioner Mottas. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of personnel services contract for $60,000 with legislative consultant Jill Romo for services related to the 89th Texas Legislative Session. This contract is dated back 10-1. We were waiting on like a 12-95 form to get back from them.
Just discussion, Judge?
Yes, please.
I certainly don't mind approving something up to. But what we had done in the past is we'd paid each of the consultants an amount during session and then a lesser amount out of session, which would reduce the amount of $60,000 each. What we'd done in the past, we can always change it, but what we'd done in the past is we'd agreed to pay legislative consultants $5,000 a month during session and then $2,500 a month during the interim if we needed them. So I just want to make sure that this contract does not bind us to having to pay $60,000. So I will, I'll ask that to our legal counsel and see what her interpretation of it is, because.
Or if we can pass something with those stipulations on there.
And, and that's the court's, still the court's desire, because I, I don't. We don't use them much in the interim is the point, but we certainly use them some. And obviously, I just want flexibility in this contract to not have to pay the total amount if we don't need it.
Also, just want to let you know, 1,551 bills were filed yesterday.
It's going to be a busy session?
Yes.
As written, Commissioners, it just.
Annual.
As written, it's going to be $5,000 per month. If you want more flexibility in that, then we can certainly go back and add that to the contract as an edit and then con, you know, actually see if they're willing to accept that this time.
Right, so I would make the motion then to amend the contract to provide that we pay our legislative consultants. And, and I would like to go ahead and do this as three and four, Judge, if that's okay? Because it's going to be the same issue on Ms. Shipton. Is that okay to do, Judge?
They're both the same, yes. They're the exact same contracts. But let me point out one more thing, too, before we make this motion. I mean, I did talk to them yesterday and from, you know, they had a nine-month supplemental contract that ran April 2022 to June 23, totaling $45,000. And it got through the last regular session. They covered four subsequent special sessions for us pro bono. They have been excellent lobbyists. They have worked tirelessly for the county in communication with us and worked with our department heads and other elected officials and stuff. So I totally understand, Commissioner Chesney, and off-session things that have gone on. But these people have worked with us and worked before session, after session, promoting our ideas and covering the county and making sure we are apprised of what's going on and being filed against us, so.
Judge, I'd like to go back and check. I've heard that pro bono thing before. I'd like to go back and check that, because I thought we made up for that, and I, I really think we did. And, and so I'm not going to, and I know you got that information from them. So before, I, I don't, I'm not taking that at face value. I'm not disputing you. But I know you just got it from them. But I don't remember us not paying them and going back and doing something for them. So I'd like to check that before we just take that. At the end of the day, you know, if we need to go back and make up some time, then I'm certainly willing that if we didn't pay them for four months of work when they were working.
I know what I was thinking. We need to pay them if they worked for us, yes.
So that's another agenda item. I'd like to see that, and I'd like to see what they did during that time, that they say they didn't get paid for it, because I don't remember us, you know, doing that. But, you know, I, I could be forgetting, but I don't expect anybody to do anything for free. But on this particular contract, it basically, the way I read it, and that's why I wanted to hear Ms. Dorsey say, is we owe them for this contract now, and we don't have any flexibility. So my motion was to go back and provide that we have that flexibility in some manner that after session's over, that we come back and review. And, and we could even maybe extend it through June, just to give us a little time. I'd be happy to do that, even though that's.
I think you just leave it until after session is over, because we all know with the surplus and the last time there was, there could quite possibly be multiple special sessions.
Of which we may or may not have, have anything to do with those special sessions. There may not be any need for us to have them involved at all. So maybe the, the motion just should be that we, we sign the contract for six months at $5,000 a month and then come back the first of June to readdress it. It buys us some time, right? The session's over in May. So my motion would be that we, we agree to pay them the $5,000 a month through the end of June, but that we put it back on the agenda for June 1 and, and come back and see, you know, what we need to do with them then. I, I agree, they're a great team. I think they've done a great job. I've got no issue with either one of them continuing on as our team. I just don't want to overpay.
Commissioner, through June.
Which is kind of my common theme, so I should not be surprised at anybody.
Through June would be nine months, because it's October through June.
Okay, well then, I, I don't think we should be paying them $5,000 a month from October either. So I, I think we ought to pay an amount pre-session and an amount during session. So if, I, I don't know where we are. So in other words, we're not paying them anything right now?
Right, this will be the current year's contract.
Okay, that's, no, that's fair. I appreciate you clarifying that, Teresa. I would say then that we need to pay them $2,500 a month for October, November, and December, $5,000 a month through June, and then revisit it after that. That would, thank you, Teresa. I appreciate that. I, I did not, I didn't catch that. Because obviously, they're doing stuff now to prepare for session. They're working with us. I get it. We need to pay them for that. But it's not like session. You, it's, they're not, no offense, they're just not doing that much for us right now that they will be during the session, that they're going to be doing a lot more. So that would be my motion, to make it $2,500 a month for October, November, December, $5,000 a month for January through June, and then bring it back to revisit it after that. If that dies, then that dies.
Can we just cap it at $50,000 or $40,000?
Commissioner, you said 25 per month for October, November, and December?
For each.
Okay.
For each. Yes, ma'am.
So I'll second it, just for the sake of discussion. You know, the session really started Monday. I mean, like the judge pointed out, you know, how many bills that are out there. We know that the work that our legislative team does for us is a lot of defense. It's a lot of protection of our interests that we have as Noasis County, as county in general, along with all the other counties. 253 counties, because there's usually one that bucks the system because they're a very affluent county and don't need a lot of the help that us regular counties do. But aside from that, you know, I agree. I know that, that your message is not that, that Mr. Romo and Ms. Shipton are not doing the work they need to. But the work did start Monday, and so it's, it's an active process. They are going through all the bills to see what is lined up against us already. We should have a very robust legislative session. We need to bring them in, Judge. I'd like to see them come in on the 12th, I mean, sorry, on December 11th and be able to have one last follow-up before they really get into the session in January. I just, I worry because there's going to be so many items that are going to pick at us. There's so many mandates that are going to be placed on us again that we have to brunt the cost for our local taxpayers. And then with our tax base the way that it is, it just gets more difficult every year. And then we're tightening the budget every year as we go down. And, and, and I know that that's where your motivation is, is to be as, 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 as direct with the payments as possible. But I feel their work has already begun, right? I mean, how, how long does it take to go through all those? You know, you can argue that may not take too long, but I want them active every day. I know they're active every day. I know that they were, they've been there every day, even during off year, off years and off sessions. So we have worked the price down. We started off with three. We started off with three representatives working for us, and now we're down to two. So over the years, we've really shrunk it down. I would like for us to support the contract that we have. If we need to modify it like we had before, then let's do that. Let's have that discussion, but not at the sake of delaying this. I just, I hate the message that scrutiny's important and that's what we're asked to do. So I'm not saying, let's just give them what they're asking for. But every time that our legislative team has come to us, it is, it's always wait and it's always reducing down the price, which thankfully, they have said, okay. With their background that they have, they could easily say, you know what? No, we're going to go work for someone else or several other groups. But we built up that relationship with them. I know that they've got a good relationship with our local delegation, and I'm sure they're working on the new delegation that we have. So with that said, I think that this is a reasonable amount. If we need to adjust for after the session, I'm good with that. But the lead-up to me starts now. They're going to be more and more active. They're going to, there's more, there's, you know, I didn't get to go, but I've heard from several people that were there in Austin yesterday and on Monday. And it's already picking up to the levels that you see on a normal legislative day, just a regular work week. And Judge, you can appreciate that. It kind of slows down, but it's busy now.
I can absolutely appreciate that, and I agree 100%.
I'm with, I'm in favor of the proposal that we had before. That's on move.
He's already on.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's why I made a motion for discussion.
His motion, you seconded for discussion. But I would say, Commissioner Chesney, and I totally agree. You know, I've cut back on so many things because of that. But they absolutely have been working. They've been meeting with us. They've met with taxes as a collector. They have been working on legislation for us already. I think if you want to stop it after session, but in a legislative year before session, everything happens before session. You've been there, you know as well as I do once those things go. And there are so many new people coming in. There are so many blocks that they have to stop things from people's agenda and get to know new people. I think going back October 1 to the end of session, if you wanted to amend your, I could vote for that. But I think they have definitely been working and in contact with my office and every other elected office in here. I know they've contacted the sheriff. They, I believe the county attorney has been in communication with them. They are working for the county since the beginning of this year, so.
So we're looking at $2,500 for three months and $5,000 for the next six months?
That was my motion, yeah. Yeah, that was my motion, Judge. With $2,500 for the three months and then six months at $5,000. That was my motion, yes. That was six questions.
So you have a, are you going to second that still or do you want to cancel?
So the amount is still the 60 with that motion?
No.
It would be 37.5.
37.5, no.
No. Are you, do you have another second for your motion? Are you going to second his motion? Hey, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? No.
No.
Two opposed, three passes. The motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to, since that was three and four together, right? Those are identical, the two lobbyists, yes. Moving on to item number five, discuss and consider the allocation of vote entitlement for Oasis County Appraisal District.
He didn't put it in motion, but we still can come back prior to the end of the session.
Right. And the motion was through June, so that gives us a whole month. In other words, the session ends in May, but the motion included June so that we can then come back on June 1 and decide what to do going forward.
But the motion included only paying them $2,500 for October and November that they've already been working on? Yes.
December.
Right.
Yes, and December. Well, it's not December. We're back paying them $2,500.
It was October, November, December.
Yes, yes. Okay. Moving on to number five, discuss and consider allocation of vote entitlement for Oasis County Appraisal District Board of Directors ballot. Discuss and consider adoption of resolution casting the votes. And I would like to make a motion if someone would, that we would cast 500 of our votes to Gabrielle Hillfold, who has held the Oasis County seat since 2018 under many previous administrations, and 200 of our 700 votes to Mr. Elizondo.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
207 and what?
500 and 200.
500 and 200. 500 to the person who has represented us for the last...
207 for Elizondo.
And 200. We only have 700. 200 for Elizondo.
I heard 207, okay.
Sorry. And we have a motion and a second. All those in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? The motion passes. Item number six, discuss and consider funding for the request for body armor for the Oasis County Constables. And Commissioner Chesney, I believe this came out of one of our last meetings, and you put this on for us to find funding for this.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And Judge, I'm sorry, can I go back to 13 and 14? I would like to...
13 and 14.
If that's okay, I would like to have, I would like to make a motion that we go back and look at that alleged pro bono time to see if we owe them some back.
It's three and four, not 13 and 14. I was like, we're not there yet.
Sorry, 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 sorry. Three and four, sorry.
Yes, if we haven't, then we pay them.
I wouldn't make a motion that we go back and look and bring that back to court to see if we have, if we did not pay them for some time that they worked for us that was agreed to, that they would work for us. Please, can I get, that's the motion to direct staff to bring that back for the December meeting.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Judge, I meant to clean that up at the end of the other one. On number five...
Six on the body armor.
I'm going to catch up here.
Where are you at?
Yeah, I know, I'm a little off on my count. Judge, this was an item that I had put on and asked for staff to look to, but this was an item that if you remember during budget, the constables were indicated, and I think it was Constable Perez, I think, who came forward and said that they were short and needed some help with body armor. I put this on to see if Commissioners had funds in their discretionary funds and/or to see maybe if staff could help us find that. So I don't know if you had an opportunity, Teresa, to do that before I start asking for everybody to throw in their money?
Yes, sir. Commissioner, recommend creating a new project with the 1901 general capital monies went for interest that hasn't posted yet. We have interest that's going to post to the general capital projects.
And do you know how much that is?
And we can create a new project number. I do not. I do know through June of '24, we have 1.6 that hasn't been distributed, that at that time had not been distributed yet. So we'll have the funds available in 1901.
To cover all of this, you feel comfortable with?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
Do you agree, Lisa?
Yes, I agree.
And this is only 50,000 is the total, yes.
I think it's a huge safety issue and very much I consider this an urgent kind of matter. And I appreciate you finding that. I mean, I was, I'm sure everybody up here would have been willing to do the same thing. But I would make the motion to fund the request for the body armor for the Oasis County Constables under the new project of 1901 fund, as articulated by Teresa.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Hernandez, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose?
And is there any reason we can't go ahead and let them order it now? And because, I mean, the sooner they get it, the better. We need to get them.
Oh, they can, Michael Robinson.
Okay. So can someone get with them? And you've got, the backup was the invoice they provided us. If y'all can just make sure that gets done for them, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Item number seven, discuss and consider approving supplemental agreement, number one, to the inter-local agreement between Oasis County and the City of Robstown. This is a two-year extension. The attachment that is in your book had the incorrect date on it. You all received that by email with the correct dates in there. This is just for our emergency services. I'd make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Is there any cost or funding source?
The funding, Hospital District reimburses us for the emergency services.
No, this one is from emergency services for the county.
This is for fire calls.
But, oh, it says and emergency services, so.
Well, fire calls, they have emergency.
You have to get up to the microphone. We pay the fire calls, yes.
Yes, we pay this. It's fully budgeted. This is just a two-year extension. Nothing else has changed in the contract. We're just giving them that two years. The reason I did the one year for both ESD 2 and Robstown, which is the next item on there, is I wanted to get them both on the same schedule so that they expired at the same time and they came back up for renewal at the same time.
All of them will come up at the same time.
Right, those are the only two that we pay fire calls to. So now they are both on the same timeline, so they will both expire two years from now. So we can kind of keep a better grip on it.
And thank you for taking this on. I can't thank you enough after all these years.
You're welcome.
Of Priscilla and Sandra before that, taking on all of this. And it rightfully should be under emergency management.
Emergency services, yes.
Thank you for working on that and coordinating the timing.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? The motion passes. Then item number eight, she just explained, is the same but a one-year extension. And the contract in your book is correct, so I will make the motion to pass.
Second.
It's a two-year.
It's a two-year extension.
I thought you just said the next one was a one-year. It was like in your comments, yes.
When I did them last year, it was for one year.
Come back again for the number one before.
And now this is to extend it for two for both of them.
Okay. I have two-year in my notes, but yeah, I thought you just said it's a one-year, so. We have a motion and a second already. Commissioner Mottas, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? The motion passes. Thank you, Dee. Item number nine, discuss and consider execution of a memorandum of understanding between Oasis County Family Drug Treatment Advisory Committee and the Family Drug Court Program in the County Court at Law 5. And go ahead, Commissioner Mottas.
Just a motion to approve the execution of the MOU between Oasis County Family Drug Treatment Advisory Committee and the Family Drug Court Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? The motion passes unanimously. Item number 10, discuss and consider the county's option regarding the demolishing of the old courthouse and related matters. I know there is no backup, but before we table, I think it was just to see what we were going to do, I would...
Actually, Judge, it was.
Go ahead. Oh, he passed it out, okay. Thank you.
We did. We did yesterday.
Yes, we got it, but it wasn't...
This is not really for take action, this is just for discussion. It's always moving for the next meeting to see what we want to do, Judge.
Well, I agree with that. And I think, you know, given the media attention and the reports on it and the danger and the hazard it is, I would suggest that we add this to our delegation and our lobbyists to push for options to help us with...
Especially with the historical commission.
Decreasing the cost and...
Historical commission?
Exactly, yes.
We've gone through this before and, you know, that, and we're almost there. I think at one point, I don't know, Commissioner, you were here or not, but the commission backed out and said they would give us $40 million. They're not even going to drop in a bucket, you know, to fix it.
I agree.
And so we went back to square one. And, you know, it's been condemned a couple of times that I remember. And so I think it's, you know, I went by the other day because I had a couple of phone calls and, you know, there's some boards missing and it's still falling down and still, you know...
Fence, everything around, yes.
You know, you put it up and it's still, you know, but people are probably staying there. So before something really happens, I think we need to come back and make some kind of decisions, so what we're going to do with it.
I totally agree. And I think if we can find some options in Austin to help us with the financial burden that we are tasked with on that. And we have worked with our local historical commission as well. I believe they have seen that we have truly put in a lot of time and effort to try to find a usefulness out of that building and...
Yeah, and I'm looking at Commissioner...
All attempts have been, I'm fearful.
I think at one point, he's the one that got a bird up one time, maybe a while back. And since then, we've been kicking it around. But I think that, yeah, I think it's time for us to come back to the table and see what we want to do with it.
I agree, I agree. So we will have them at it and give us a report, at least our lobbyist as well in that December request. Item number 11, then...
We'll put it back on the...
On the agenda for the 11th with an update or...
Who's going to, who would do the update? Who do you want to do?
I think we...
You get LNV, I guess, to do the report.
Well, but that was...
That was done in 2000. But I think if we're talking about just options, I think we give it to our lobbyists and see what our options might be for them to take care of it in Austin and help us out. Yes, uh-huh, talk to...
And maybe the center's office could help us.
Absolutely. And he's offered multiple times to work with us. Our legislative delegation is in great communication with us, so.
Okay.
I think we give it to Patricia and Joel, and we go to Austin and try to see if we can take care of that.
We'll forget to get another $1,000.
So is that being tabled?
I'm sorry.
Forget to get another $1,000 then.
I don't know if we have anyone here to speak on this or not.
Forget to get another $1,000.
Yeah, I don't want to put any more money into it because they may count that. We may never be able to tear it down.
But there was no one signed up in public comment on this or anything, so I guess there's no one here on the courthouse deal. Item number 11, then, moving on.
Excuse me, Judge?
Yes.
Connie, is it being tabled?
There was no action on it. It was just discussion on what we were going to do. There was no motion. Oh, yes, Commissioner, can you speak into your microphone, too?[1572.88] Oh, yes. Commissioner, can you speak into your microphone too? I'm sorry. Yes.
Yes.
Connie is saying she cannot hear, or people cannot hear you. Yes.
I don't know what to say.
Number 11, discuss and consider unallocating $55,689 from the remaining balance of countywide ARPA funds because in our Oasis County law enforcement vehicle computers and Windows 11 software update, we were short. And they are still needing, I believe this is maybe for the installation of those. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 were listed in a letter we just all received for.
Judge, actually, no, it was 14 through 19 only. If you look at the updated.
Oh, there was an updated one?
He, the one that was handed out, was 14 through 19.
Mine says 12 through 19, which is.
That's the scratch out.
Oh, okay, 14, sorry. Scribbling on there, so we'll go on to number 12. Discuss and consider the de-selection of Turner Ramirez for Architectural Services for the Oasis County Emergency Operations Center renovations. And discuss and consider the conditional selection of Richter Architects. I made this motion, have spoke to Turner Ramirez. They have not been out there. They have not walked the building. They have not done any work on this. And it was brought to my attention that since Richter is doing the rest of the building, it is an easier pass-through if the same person works on it and prepares for the next. So I spoke to them, and so it is my wish to unselect Turner Ramirez and select Richter as the architect for the EOC portion.
Second, Judge.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number 13, discuss and consider unallocating precinct four ARPA funds in the amount of $195,898 and reallocating $114,648 to County Road 47 Bridge Widening Project and $81,250.97 to the Bob Hall Pier Reconstruction Project. Commissioner Chesney, I've got a lot of numbers here. Did you want to?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, basically.
Make that a little simpler.
Right, yeah. Simply put, the County Road 47 Bridge Widening came in over budget, and the London Drainage Project came under budget. And so we're switching out some funds, and then the remainder of the ARPA funds that I have left over from the Deputy Constable Precinct Four that I'd funded for several years that was unfilled for a while, I'm allocating that to, with court approval, allocating that to the Bob Hall Pier Reconstruction Project. And I think that will keep all of my ARPA funds now allocated. So that's, it's just, it's cleanup, basically. So that would be the motion.
Question, Judge?
Do we have a second?
Have a question?
Yes.
This $81,000, is it just for the pier only?
It's actually for the reconstruction project, which would be the pier and the restaurant, either or, whichever, because that was where the ARPA funds, that's where the ARPA funds currently are allocated, is to the restaurants. So it'd go towards the pier or restaurant, depending on what's needed. And I don't know, I don't know it's going to, where it's going to be needed, but, so that's why we just put the reconstruction project in general, but it would be for either or.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
No, you know my feelings about the restaurant, so.
Exactly. So we have a motion, and Commissioner Modas seconded. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
So one, four ayes, one no. The motion passes. Now, item number 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19, correct, as per our letter we just got passed out. We were asked because of the change in the court if that we would postpone this. I believe I, I asked, and I believe it was done previously to me coming on board. We have made a history of doing that kind of stuff, that we have treated all the same. So I would make the motion to table. And somebody would use second if they wanted some other discussion.
Is that?
I have a second for discussion, so now we're good.
Okay, go ahead. I was just going to second for discussion.
Yes. Commissioner Modas seconded, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind 14 being tabled because I mean, that's, whatever happens, happens on that one, but the medical's already there. The other thing of 15 is something that I, using my ARPA funds for salaries until something does happen, and they can carry over until everything is settled in the public health. And, you know, and also in the public health, you know, we, you know, the court even went as far as, you know, asked for RFPs, and we got some, you know. So on December 13th, Commissioners' Court approved a finding for the method of procurement request proposals for public health services if they got their own building, authorized purchasing agent to publish a notice and do that, and delegated evaluation authority such in committee. On the proposal opening was conducted on March the 19th, and one proposal was received. On April the 4th, Agenda Item 3D3, Commissioners' Court conditionally selected Amistad Health Center for Public Health Services, that comes on. On July 24th, Agenda Item 3A7, Commissioners' Court awarded and executed the health to Amistad. And the RFE number 327224, also the court tabled this item for four months, which is December, November, really, I think, at that time. For discretion, to find out what's going to happen, and that's, and that's fine with me on the public health. I don't have no, no, no issues on that. If you want to see what's going to happen, what do you want to do with it, who handles it, or who's going to take it. But that relates to number 15, which that one I like to take action today because that has to do with salaries and that. You know, if it's not, then we're, I don't know, we're going to pay Dr. Gonzalez and Aaron until we find out what's going on. The public health will still be at the Calderon Building, provided by the Health District. And, and Public Health will be there on December the 8th. In fact, the transition's already been done now. And they'll be there until December the 8th with the transition, then open the doors on January the 1st. So my, my really concern here is just to do the salaries for director and coordinator of $227,433. And then Grant Works, of course, gets $25,500. So I think that right now, my concern is just to continue on what we have with the staff that we have there. And this is why my, I want to use my, my salaries from the, from the ARPA, ARPA funds that I, that I have, which is the $59,495.52 and $195,437 that was reallocated from the Drainage District on Belt Lane to, to back to the salaries. So, and with that in mind, after, you know, I just wanted to make sure that everything is, is up. As far as that, that 15 is to really, my, my concern is really to do the 15. So unless we want to place Dr. Gonzalez or Aaron in another, another position, but how we're going to pay them. So that was my, my concern right now.
You're, you're asking to remove item 15 from the tabled list because we have a motion and a second. There really shouldn't be this much discussion on a tabled item, but I understand your.
I have to explain because, you know, it's, if not, you know, then we, actually, we're moving to employees who are not going to get paid. So.
Um.
And my concern would be using my ARPA funds, just like we use ARPA funds for anything else and other salaries, and until whatever's worked out. Somebody's got to run the clinic, the health.
There's nothing to run in the clinic right now.
There is, I mean, there is.
There's nothing.
There is, because there are working right now, the health clinic is working right now. People are there, people.
We, the city has people working there on the health clinic right now for two days a week and two days a month. But the county doesn't have anything going on.
Well, but the county that we watch was there. That's our building, that's our facility, and they coordinate everything with the Health District.
Judge, I think we still ought to, to vote on the motion to table. I'm, I'm, I'm still going to support the motion to table, but if you want to pull 15 off, because technically we're not really doing this right, because, and I know you tried. Because we have a motion to table, and we're not supposed to have discussion, but I'm still going to vote to ta, to, I'm still going to vote to support the table. But if you want to take that off and have some more discussion, whatever, but we've, we got to figure out how to do this right, because.
I will change my motion to exclude item number 15 and table the rest until the January 1st new commissioner comes in. Are you willing to do that second, Commissioner?
This means we're going to have to have a discussion on 15, but I mean, I'm still going to vote to table it, but I mean, if you want to, if you want to have a discussion, you know, I mean.
I.
It's up to y'all. I'm just saying, we're not, we're not really supposed to be discussing. I'm, I'm happy to stay with the motion to table on all of them, or I'm hap, whatever. I just, I'm going to vote to table this thing eventually, but if Mr. Gonzalez wants to say some things, then whatever, y'all, y'all can decide. I'm, I'm happy to vote yes on the motion to table all of it, but I'm just saying, we can't keep having discussions since we've made a motion to table. And it's been second. We're not supposed to discuss things. So I just don't want to do it wrong.
I don't mind tableing everything except 15. I like to, like to pull 15 out.
Withdraw my.
What'd you say?
You're going to withdraw it?
Yeah.
Or amend, just, just, well, just amend to.
I'm withdrawing, making the motion to someone else.
No, just to amend, just to take 15 out.
I made the motion to table everything, but I don't.
I'm good to stay with table on all of it. I'm just saying, we can't keep discussing this when we have a motion to table on the floor.
Okay, the motion stands. It's like, my motion stands, your motion, your second stands. Let's just have a vote.
Excuse me, Judge, again, I'm kind of confused. What is the motion?
To table 14 through 19. Sorry.
Until January because of the new person coming in into the elected office.
Table 14 through the 19, through 19?
Yes.
Is that including 16 and 17?
14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19.
Sounds like somebody's up to their old channanigans here, because I like to discuss my projects. Okay? I mean, I don't think we should accept a request from a citizen, okay? That, I mean, that's fine, he's coming, that's fine, he's coming in, okay? But shouldn't you be working at the city? You know, I mean, instead of, I just don't, these people from Driscoll have been waiting a long time for this improvements in the building, okay? So I don't see why this gentleman wants to come in and postpone this 16 and 17. You know, I mean, we've been working hard since I came in from day first, because nothing has ever been done in those areas. And these people deserve it. So Judge, I.
Well, the, the motion right now is to table, as per the commissioner, and I stated in my motion when I did it, you all have done this in the previous administrations when a commissioner changes and the, the court is going to change. We are making a motion on something that someone is going to change seats. I understand, Commissioner, I totally understand.
Oh, you don't.
Your desire that you want to get this project done.
No, you don't understand. You don't understand. You're going, you're going by.
We have a motion and a second.
Judge, things were passed through, run through when I came in, so I wouldn't vote for them, okay? So, yeah, it's been done, but against, they pushed them through before I came in.
Name me one thing that we didn't delay when you were coming in. One thing. Give me one specific, since you're making that accusation, because you're 100% wrong. You just said things were pushed through when you were coming in that you didn't get to vote on. Tell me one thing.
But I can't, that was, that was, that was what's going on four years.
Even when I.
It's going on four years ago. Judge, I understand.
One thing. I'm still waiting for one thing that was pushed through, because this is what we do every time.
I can't remember everything. I just know that it was, Brent, okay?
No, you don't.
Yes, you do, and it's fine, it's fine that both you people are friends with Mr. Pusley, and that's fine. But y'all shouldn't do his agenda either, okay? I mean, these people need this new building, and the value engineering also needs to be done or paid for. But, I mean, come on, this is, we've been working good together, and all of a sudden here comes this gentleman, Mike Pusley, that does a lot of things on the site. That's why they, they call him Backroom Deal Pusley, okay?
Okay, I'm going to stop right there because I'm not going to call names. Excuse me, that's enough. No, okay. You can go to the microphone if you want to speak, but we have a motion and a second. We have done this in the previous administrations in history. You did it when I came to office. Commissioner, I am a friend of yours as well, as well as Commissioner Pusley's. Whether you believe it or not, I believe in being fair.
I'm sorry, Judge, but I don't believe you.
Well, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 No.
Any opposed?
No.
The motion passes three to two. And you forced my hand on that, and I'm very sorry. I was willing to discuss.
I'm just telling you the truth, Judge. I mean.
You're already making mine, Judge. You're already made up your mind.
It's because we do it like this every time there's someone new comes in, every time, Commissioner Gonzalez, and you know it.
Item number 20.
No, everything that affects that.
Moving on.
Both, both of you came out on Facebook supporting Mike Pusley, okay? You were calling people to vote for Mike Pusley, Judge.
I was. I told you ahead of time I was a Republican. You're absolutely right, I'm not going to deny that.
And fine, but it shouldn't be carried on to this court here.
This is not what this court is, and you're the one carrying on in here.
No, 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 no.
We have items to discuss moving forward.
I think it's time, I think it's time people realize that the person that you are, really, okay? And.
Boy, that goes both ways. Be real careful, Commissioner.
Well, oh, come on, Judge, and you go along with them.
Okay, moving on to item number 20, discuss and consider approval of the First Amendment to the interlocal agreement between Oasis County and the Oasis County Hospital District for inmate healthcare services at the jail facilities.
Before we go further, I'd like to just clarify one thing. What, if we going to have this in January, so how, the salaries will be being paid for, from where?
Not.
Johnny Hip is at the back microphone. It looks like he wishes to speak. Are you speaking on the next?
I'm sorry, Judge. I thought you were calling up the item, but I'll, I'll be glad to step out of this, so.
I almost called you out on something. No, 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 you're good. Okay, sorry.
I'm just saying that.
Um, they said their, their board voted, and they said an amount that they were willing to do. I understand you have ARPA funds that you would like to do. I had assumed that those funds, just like any of these with those other projects, would be put into the MOU with either HR, with Public Works, and with Inland Parks. Those projects are not going away, that they would be put in the MOU section of that. There is going to be a meeting. We're going to talk about a meeting that I would like to add, a separate meeting strictly for the MOU projects. I don't know how much is left on their allocation. I know I've had several meetings. I've had meetings with you that you have also said that you didn't think it was going to go forward. I have a hard time voting for employees in a position that there is no job. So if there's something tangible that you could show, I think they've been talking to the city, the city doing the Health District. But it, it just hasn't, I mean, we tried. We went back and forth several times, and we don't have the funding. We voted against the budget for it. It's, it's, we have to do what, all that we can afford and all that we can do as per voted on the board that finances it.
Well, we're still, you're staying here, Judge. We're still asking for the ARPA funds. Those are my ARPA funds. And I want to use them the way I want to use them. I don't, I don't tell you, you can't fund another salary. I don't tell Commissioner Brennan, he can fund another salary for constables or anybody. That's not, that's not the way it works. That's his salary. That's his money. You know, my money is also, is my money as far as the ARPA fund is concerned. So to me, to use this way I see fit.
I, I don't disagree with that.
And if I want to keep them in salaries until we find something else for them, that's fine, you know? But we don't know what's going to happen yet with the Health District. We, you know, we haven't even, we haven't decided how, what's going to happen, how, how we're going to handle it. You know, so how, what is the guarantee? What is, we haven't decided that, Judge, and there's some motions there. All these ones that I read, now we're going to go back, undo those motions, although they were passed, motions were passed five zero. You know, and now we've got to go back and undo them. We, now we're going to do a motion over a motion just because we don't want it now. You know, but how can you put that in the past? So I don't, I'm asking the county attorney to, to check this because we have emotions that were passed, RFPs that were passed, people who were contracted. How, how do we go back and undo all this, you know, without having to do more, more motions on each one of those things that we passed, that we passed a motion on five zero for us to do? So how do we go back and do, undo that so we can continue forward? And saying, okay, we're going to make a motion to undo the first motion we made, now go, now we've got to make a new motion.
You can rescind, you would rescind the first vote?
You're correct. We have to rescind those motions, and we haven't done that.
We have postponed them, so we are not moving forward, yes.
You can postpone it, but you know, you, you, you put in people in salary like in jeopardy, they're not having, getting their salaries. For whatever reason, you, you put them in jeopardy because you didn't, there's not going to be a salary for them. But my deal is, is like everything else that we said, and it happens all the time. You know, well, contingency on what's going to happen, right? I mean, I'm not saying we're going to keep them for the year, the whole year, two years. I'm, I'm saying it's contingency of what's going to happen between now and January, you know? The incoming commissioner could, could think differently. He can do whatever, but I'm not saying, I mean, you know, I think that if not, I think we owe it to our employees, like we have everybody else, to place them somewhere else and give them other jobs. You know, why now? These employees are being treated different than other employees. This, this is my, my, my thing that, you know, that my question, so I think their salaries, and I don't know how the district would even consider that, you know, any longer to maybe extend them for another three, four months, but, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying this, their salaries are, are good until December, I believe. Is that right, Dr. Gonzalez?
They're through November is my understanding. The effect, the effect of a table basically means it's continued until we decide it. You don't have to rescind anything.
It's through November, Commissioner.
Okay, so you said, I'm just saying, so now, what, so they're going to just not have a job because we don't want to give them a job? You know, I mean, I can't believe that actually we're doing this to our own employees. I cannot believe that. Wow. But then, Judge, I guess this is your call too, right? I mean, it's, but anyway, I just.
I was willing to pull the team out to discuss until it got ugly. I'm sorry that everything got tabled, but I also know, we have tabled this, which means we are staying with the city county Health District. We have pushed this and pushed this, and I have asked many times and had many times meetings with them, and if we have no Health District over there, there is no job for them.
I understand it.
Find another position they want to work at until you decide or something? If there's another open position in the county, by all means, we do that for everyone.
That's why I want to keep them.
But not at the, not at the building, sitting there collecting a check that we haven't been doing anything in two years.
If you find them a job, Judge, is it going to be at the same pay?
I'd like to have Dr. Gonzalez say a few things. Doctor?
On what item? This is, we've already tabled these items. So there's going to be an ARPA meeting supposedly on the 19th that you can bring this back up if you want to, because it's an ARPA-related issue. We've already tabled these items. We've kind of let.
Let me just clarify something, Dr. Gonzalez, would you please?
But on what item? This is out of order, and you don't get to do this, Commissioner Gonzalez. The judge is in charge of the meeting, not you. I know you think you are, but we're not on your item.
You need to remember what you're telling you.
You're not, I'm telling you exactly what I'm telling you. We're not on this item. I'm, I'm calling a point of order because there is no item that this can be discussed. It's a point of order, so he, the judge needs to gavel this down, and we need to move on.
Let's go back to public comment then. I want to do open public comment.
This can be, this can be put on the agenda for the 19th.
You can bring it back up on November 19th.
We have already voted and tabled, and there's been enough discussion. This is still in November.
We have done that hundreds of times.
I will open it up three minutes. Public comment. Dr. Gonzalez, are you wanting to speak? We have done that in the past for a public comment, but this item has been tabled. We cannot talk to you. We cannot speak. You have three minutes.
Hello, Judge, Commissioners. I think I just want to highlight that it keeps being said that we're over there doing nothing. We do have a job description. Our job description does highlight the different areas we do. That has a lot of. That has a lot of, allow me.
Your time is running.
So initially, our, our mission and purpose, as passed in the court back in May of, May tenth of 2023, to expand the scope as an information source for Commissioners' Court in the citizens of Oasis County, to be a clearinghouse for connecting various healthcare wellness and behavioral healthcare services within the county to allow for integrated community health network system. So, basically, what, you know, in, in describing the job description, there's points that have, that doing that. Working with stakeholders, working with community partners, going and engaging with various community partners. Uh, that's something we do on a regular basis. Looking at ways of developing integrated care and health. So, all that i- is investigation as far as what's going on with the community, with the population, looking at the analytic, analytics behind that, and then seeing how to move forward. Looking at vision and looking at for various strategic ways of using that, that space. Uh, we've done that before. We've worked with, we used, we did those mini leases before. Now we were moving on to the bigger lease. Part of that, too, was looking at different policies as far as how they impact health here in, uh, they're in that rural area of Oasis County. Uh, working with community partners for helping them to identify ways of finding funding so they can close gaps for services. Facilitating, promoting different meetings there, uh, those impacted by the area. One of those being that Colonius Coalition. So, it's not that we don't do anything. There are a lot of different things we do on a daily basis. A lot of it is analytical. There is the portion of it having to deal with if, if questions pop up. There is questions along the way, having to deal with jail diversion. There was a bunch of information needed for that. When the question got brought up in June of twenty, of, of twenty twenty-three, regarding what's going on with public health services, uh, the county's not seeing the services that are there. That's where all the analytical came and kicked in with us as well, as far as identifying what those services were and seeing what kind of things were, were being done or not being done by our public health agreement. So, I, I, you know, those are a lot, there are things that we're doing that, saying that we don't do anything. That's, that is a misconception there I just wanted to highlight. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Moving on to item twenty.
Thank you, Doctor Gonzalez.
Discuss and consider approval of the First Amendment. Is Mr. Hip still here? To the interlocal agreement between Oasis County and the Oasis County Hospital District for inmate healthcare services.
Uh, good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Judge, I don't know if you would be amenable, uh, Michael has an item under, uh, purchasing under E1 that relates to the Wexford Agreement, which basically deals with the second year. So, I don't know if you wanna talk about these in tandem or wait till then, or?
Yeah, we can talk about them now. We'll pull up E1 as well.
Okay.
In fact, I talked to Jenny about this, just gets us through November. I was like, this is, where's our, after November? So, this helps me out with my question. I just asked the county attorney earlier, so thank you.
Great.
Judge, I would move that we pass number twenty and number E1.
Um, I'll second that motion, and it has been reviewed by the attorneys, and the sheriff is okay with this, and the hospital district has all approved. So, any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye? I seconded, yes. Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. On item twenty-one, and that was for both of those items, yes. Discuss and consider authorizing the approval of escrow amendment conditions letter agreement between Oasis County Hospital District and the Christus Bond Health System.
Judge, I'd like to make a motion to table this.
To the December the eleventh meeting?
My guess for now, and my understanding is there's a potential mediation forthcoming on this. I'd like to see the results of that.
I will second to the eleventh, to the December eleventh meeting. Is there, uh, any, all those in favor say aye? Sorry, this is a table. We don't discuss.
Nay.
There's two of us present and one. Does that mean it still passes? There's only three of us here, the majority. It's fine. Item number twenty-two. Discuss and consider accepting the fifty thousand dollar supplemental stipend from the hospital district for the Oasis.
What happened to twenty-one?
Tabled.
It was only got two people.
It's two to one, the majority, yeah.
The majority, it passed two to one.
Is that majority, or is it three, you have to have three to pass?
I just asked that, and she said, the majority present.
A majority of those here voted to table.
Just to the December the eleventh.
December eleventh?
Yes, sir. Number twenty-two is the county attorney stipend from the hospital district.
So moved, I'm sorry, Judge.
I will second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number twenty-three. Discuss and consider giving the county judge the authority to approve payments since we only have one meeting in December, as well as you did up until this meeting.
So moved.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number twenty-four. Discuss and consider upcoming Commissioners' Court meeting dates. We would like to add, and we have talked to everyone, we are going to do a special meeting November the nineteenth at nine AM to canvass the election, and.
Be here at nine AM.
Uh, this is when everybody on the response said they could be here.
Yeah, I gotta make that appointment, I have to be. Yeah, I have to go to this cardiologist.
Is it out of town, or will you be here later?
I'll be here later, yeah.
I'm not sure.
But she could change it to one thirty.
I'm not sure where everybody else is, if we can get a quorum. We just need two people here for the election, but we wanted to add the, to discuss on the MOU's discussion, to add a one-item agenda to help us get through the end of the year.
We can always do the MOUs in the afternoon.
Just need to get everybody in the room. Judge, you wanna wait on this one, too?
Yeah, let's come back and see what everybody's schedule looks like, so. Item number B1. Discuss and consider authorizing and approving Amendment Number Five to the agreement with Aramart Correctional Services for the jail food management.
Sheriff's in, in, uh, agreement.
The sheriff's in approval, they put it on, so.
So moved, Judge.
We have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item C1. Discuss and consider approval of the interlocal agreement between Oasis County and the Community Supervision and Corrections Department in relation to the Veterans Treatment Court. This is budgeted in the courtroom, uh, court administrative budget, so we'll make the motion to pass.
Second, sorry.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor on C1, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item C2. Discuss and consider the approval of contract amendment by the Coastal Bend Council of Governments. The, um, aging, I have a question on it, Edward. I'm, and I make the motion to pass. Do you, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Did you second, Commissioner?
I did, yes, ma'am.
Yes, sorry. And Edward, on this, the transportation, the fixed rate, six ninety, what is the transportation? What is that? Is that delivering meals to houses, or?
No, Judge, so, then, so this whole program, program is holistic. So, the whole, you gotta look at back why the program was developed, is to help the old, older population meet, greet, and get not stuck in your house. So, in this case, what these transportation units are, one, to bring you to the community center. So, majority of these units, it's about seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven units that we bring to the community centers. So, we transport about fifteen to twenty every day to and from the community centers.
I was just asking, because I know we had this discussion before, and it was a big ordeal, a liability about putting people in our vehicles. And I had talked to the cog about it, and that's why I was asking about, because it's on here from the cog. And they said that we had no grants for transportation. That's why I was wondering if this was paying for the transportation of the meals going out, or?
No, this is actual transportation.
They do have a.
I don't know who you talked to over there.
Grant for transportation, yes.
Yes, so this is our transportation portion of that grant.
And I, I know many of us have said in the past, I know this is to and from, but do we sign waivers of liability? Do we get anything from these people?
Yes, in fact, we, we're now emailing them both to Risk Management and to your office, just so that you know, these are the people that are transporting in and around.
Is this a form that's been provided by the county attorney?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion and a second already. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number three, uh, I believe was brought to my attention that we want, this is acceptance of a no cash match grant award from the Office of Governor, Public Safety, uh, local border security program. And on, I brought this to my attention this morning, that we want to reject this. I think it was, we didn't get enough in the offer on the, when we asked for the grant, and there isn't anyone that can oversee the grant with such a small amount, too.
The, yes, the, the reporting and that would not be, we couldn't get it from the ME, so.
I will make the motion to reject this grant, send it back then, yes.
Yes, we'll reject it in court.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 No.
Any opposed?
No.
The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item D1. Public Works. Discuss and consider action on request by Wyatt Ranches of Texas to adopt an order to close. Do we have to have all Commissioners here or just present? Because I know this has to be unanimous vote. On the Wyatt Ranches. Do I need everyone present?
I believe you need everyone, but I haven't researched.
I'll wait till they come back. I'll come back to this one, yes. If they are paying attention, or your office staff is paying attention, if I could get the other Commissioners to come back to court for this vote. Item number two. Discuss and consider authorizing and approving execution of a service agreement.
Wait, wait, we have, we have.
Now you won't have a quorum.
Commissioner, if you leave, we can't proceed.
Yeah, but the meeting has to stop.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Five-minute break, everyone. If we need a restroom break, that is fine. We will, um, reconvene. We had a short recess. Going back to item D1, because I believe we have some special guests here in the audience. Thank you for coming in. Discuss and consider action on request by Wyatt Ranches of Texas LLC to adopt an order to close, abandon, and vacate portions of County Road Forty-four. This has been presented. It has been posted. All the correct things have been done by Public Works. Well, I'll second that motion. Every, and the sheriff, the commissioner, all of us are unanimous, so I would make the motion to pass then. And so you, it has to be unanimous of the Commissioners present, so Commissioner Modest.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All three of us say aye, so thank you all for your work on this. Thank you, Sheriff, for bringing it to our attention as well. Thank you for dashing in, and we wish you all the best, and we appreciate Wyatt Ranches for everything you do for Oasis County as well, so thank you. Moving on to, I guess we were on item D2, I think when we stopped. Excuse me, I'm a little lost.
Yes, ma'am.
Discuss and consider authorizing and approving execution of a service agreement with the Elevator. I'm not even gonna try to say that name. Elevator Corporation, TKE, under Region Four Education Service Center. This is a standard contract that you do for elevator service annually, correct?
That's correct, Judge.
I'll make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number three. Discuss and consider authorizing and approving the execution of an agreement with AHI. This is for janitorial services, and this has been budgeted for, um.
So moved, Judge.
That's correct, Judge.
We have a motion. I will second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number four. Approve the award and execution of an agreement with Vulcan Construction Materials, aggregate type PB grade forty-five. Make the motion to pass. We have a motion and a second. This is regular aggregate that you stockpile for use just when you're short, yes.
That's, that's correct, Judge.
So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes unanimously. Item number five. Authorize approval of an agreement. Amendment number two with Asphalt Patch Enterprises for asphalt patch HP road material is similar to the previous one, so.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct, Judge.
Yes. Make the motion to pass. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number six. I am, um, in order to keep with what we have done, in order to be fair, and Mr. Richter left, I'm gonna make the motion to table to bring back to January.
Judge, this was, actually, this was scratched out, too. This is Public Works, number.
Number six.
Six is scratched out.
Oh, it is? It's on there? Oh, it was scratched out, that it was okay to move forward?
Yes, ma'am. This is the one that we have to pay for anyway, correct? Because we owe it?
We do. This was for the changes and, um, things that have gone on. There's a hundred and twelve thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and four hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-two, for a total of five hundred and thirty-four. I believe Teresa has found the funds for this, and, um, do you wanna?
Where's that coming from, Teresa?
Different places.
The first portion for the redesign, the one twelve, three sixty-eight, there's twenty sixteen COs, and then Commissioner Chesney and the judge will, will split the remaining difference that's due for that total.
Wait, me? Which one?
So, it's for the redesign.
Oh, 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 I already talked to you about that one. Yeah, yeah, yeah. You've already taken that.
So, that, that split would be.
Just on the one twelve?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Not in total, but, uh, after we use the twenty sixteen COs, the remaining.
And how much is remaining?
It'll be twelve thousand eight forty-four each.
Yes, I, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I thought you were talking about the four hundred. My bad, because I don't have that.
No, no, no.
I, I'm happy to help with the, with the project.
And then the four hundred, Teresa?
Four twenty-two.
Four twenty-two.
The four twenty-two, I provided an option to Commissioner Hernandez, but I'm not sure if he's going to present that option, or if he's okay with reallocating, but it was to reallocate his remaining funds.
He's not here, so can we just pass this one, the 112, and we will bring the four twenty-two?
We can table the other one.
Table the other half to the January meeting, yes, okay. So, I'll make the motion to approve the funds for the hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, as per the way you divided it with the COs and our COs.
And, and the judge's contribution and my contribution to the Hilltop Project of twelve thousand?
Eight forty-four.
Eight forty-four each from?
Right, from your 2021 COs.
Got it. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes, and then make the motion to table the second portion of that to bring back as per the January meeting with everything else.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item, and just to clarify, none of these pertain to the EOC, the funding for any of the architectural work and things like that for the EOC is out of my allocated money that will be on a future agenda, so. Item number seven, approve the award and execution of ARPA-funded contractor agreement with Progressive Structures for the Calderon Clinic upgrades, and the base bid of seventy-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight thou, dollars, and that is what Commissioner Gonzalez has been working on, the main building there, the main.
And where's the funding on that one?
His precinct two, ARPA funds, yes.
Uh, he's not here, but I guess he's, he's approved this?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay, motion to approve based on the Public Works Director saying that Commissioner Gonzalez agrees with this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Number eight, approve award and execution of a contractor agreement with Progressive Structures and the construction of the animal care facility, a lump sum bid. This is the award, the contract, we have the contractor. Do you want to tell us about it? Are you telling us, I'm sorry, or Michael Robinson? On the base award plus the alternate, are you suggesting you do both of those? Because the base award is the three million, two hundred and thirty-six, and an additional hundred thousand for?
That's, that's correct, that's correct, Judge. We're recommending the, the base bid and the alternate, number one.
So moved, Judge.
I think that's inclusive. I think it's the base bid and it includes the alternate.
It includes, the three million two is the base plus the alternate total bid, okay? Not plus an additional hundred thousand.
That's correct.
That's what I wanted to clarify, thank you.
My fault.
It's within the budget, Judge.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. I will second that motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. On item nine, I believe that was on the list for?
Motion to table, Judge, till January meeting? First meeting in January?
We have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number 10, discuss and consider approval of the plat of Meachalk Acres Lots 1 through 3, and I believe I called you about this.
Yes, ma'am. We're, we're recommending approval, Judge and Commissioners.
And they covered the cost. This is part of the plating that you'll do with these, so I would make the motion to approve, yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Item number 11, approve the award and execution of ARPA-funded contractor agreement with New Stout Excavating Group Texas for construction of the London area regional retention pond in a lump sum amount of seven hundred and three thousand for the base bid additive number one and additive number two. The lump sum is still the seven oh three?
It's all, it's all three, Judge.
All three.
Base bid additive one and two.
Making a motion to pass, but I've got a little discussion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Yes, sir, go ahead.
So, Juan, on this one, I know we're, what, what we're proving, we still got to, we didn't have to bring, okay, so the additional grading and off-site disposal, we had talked about?
Yes, sir, that's included.
Right.
Yes, sir.
But I know we had talked about the landowner getting some of that dirt?
That's correct.
Since they donated, so do we, are we going to?
Yes, sir, that's going to be part of the project, Commissioners, still.
So they're going to take it to them?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And then we'd also talked about the potential of making it deeper or wider or something, but?
That's correct, that's correct, Commissioner. I think there's some, I think it was number one or number two, it has some money in there to make it deeper, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, then that's all I have, Judge.
And we have a motion and a second to pass. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item, moving on to?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that, that basically, that, that, we approved the contract, we're going to sign that, right? Jenny, that's all been looked at and approved so that we can get that signed and get that moving, right?
It's the award and execution of the contract, so yes, the approval and moving forward.
Just want to make sure, because, I mean, I've got to get this under contract before the end of the year, and I want to make sure nothing stops that. I'm trying to avoid MOUs if I can, so.
Good to go, Kent Brown.
Okay.
Shout out Kent Brown.
Thanks, all right. Appreciate it. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Thanks, Juan.
And moving on to item two, discuss and consider authorizing, approving execution of lease agreements with the Enterprise Fleet Management for the law enforcement vehicles that were approved in the budget this year. I'll make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. They'll just state the annual amount budgeted for these was one ninety-one, I believe, three forty-two. Teresa, you said?
I'm sorry, Judge?
The annual amount was one hundred and ninety-one thousand, I think, this is?
That's correct.
Yes. But these were budgeted and approved in the budget for the year.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number three, discuss and consider the conditional selection of Shoreline Sandwich Company for Courthouse Food Services. And I believe Juan was on that selection committee, he just walked out, but we only had one other person apply from?
Correct, and, and Shoreline received the highest rating?
Yes.
From their office, and they're recommending that we retain their services again.
So moved.
We have a motion, and I will second that motion, sorry, a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number four, discuss and consider the conditional selection of American Lube Company.
There's, there's three, Judge.
Yeah, thank you.
Argandegi Oil Company Two Limited and Safety Clean Systems, Inc., all three recommended award for motor oil lubricants.
We always select three?
We don't always select three, but this time, based on the different no bids that we had, this is the only way to complete the entire list that Public Works needs access to.
So we're just spreading it out, basically?
Yes.
How are you going to use, and, okay, so it's a capacity issue?
Yes.
We need more capacity than one of them can handle?
Well, I think it's just product style, I guess, certain products, different weights of oils that only one provides, and so that gives the county three folks that we have guaranteed pricing with. We also still retain the ability to procure oil from another vendor if any of these three are not able to provide it. We could go to, say, like an Arnold Oil that's locally here to procure that stuff, so.
Move.
Just giving us some flexibility.
Move the selection on, move conditional selection of the three entities as recommended.
Well, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number five, discuss and consider the conditional selection of graced paving and construction for County Road 47 Bridge Widening in the base amount of three hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars. This is your project, precinct four, I believe? Commissioner Chesney?
Uh, yes, ma'am. This was the one where I previously, this one came in over budget, and I previously reallocated some funds in a prior item, so I would move passage, and this is fully funded by ARPA. My precinct four, ARPA funds, sorry. So, so the motion would be conditional selection of graced paving and construction for County Road 47 Bridge Widening, in the base amount of three eighteen, one twenty-three. That's my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign, the motion passes.
Judge?
Yes.
I understand number six might be on the list of items to be tabled.
It is, yeah. Do you have a comment about that? Oh, okay, okay.
No, just.
It's, it's on our list here, so, and keeping with what we have done, I'll make the motion to table to the January meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other, all those in?
Discussion, Judge, just on?
On tabling, we don't really have discussion.
On tabling?
Go ahead, if you want to speak everybody else out.
I just, we don't, I, I, I don't know if it was covered earlier, I had to step away with a constituent, but with this item, along with the others, I don't want this to seem like it's arbitrary. This has been the sta, the standard practice, but I, if we can add it to policy, I think that we should.
I agree.
Agreed.
I, one hundred percent, yes.
I will leave that to you, Ms. County Attorney, and if you can bring that to us.
This has been a long?
December or January.
A standing practice. They did it before I came in, I would assume, if I was going out.
Vital, vital votes, yes, we still need to vote.
Vital appointments as well.
Any discretion here, we need to clarify that.
Yes, sir.
If it's legal, if it's legal, right? I mean, if it?
Yes.
If it's, it's a courtesy, then, and then that's all a cooperate.
Can be on our policy, anyway.
I'm fine with that, but?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In that time, if you can think of any others, please share them with us so we can do as many as possible at the same time.
I agree. And we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Moving on to item number seven, discuss and consider the conditional selection of RD, RXDX for Sunrise Pond Nature Sensory Playground, and this is precinct three, your funds, Commissioner Modas, if you want to make the motion.
Yes, motion to approve, Judge.
I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes.
Excuse me, Judge, shall I table six?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Moving on to item number eight, discuss and consider the conditional selection of RXDX for Oscar Ortiz Park and additions and renovations in the base amount of one point four nine zero. This is yours, precinct three. And for those in the audience watching with comments like that, precinct three is moving forward because Commissioner was successful, and he is the commissioner for that precinct. Nothing changes in that precinct, but this is only for precincts that things change or items of major discussion the court discusses, so, thank you. You want to do your motion? I'm sorry, I can interrupt you.
Um, no. Motion to approve the condit, conditional selection of RXDX for Ortiz Park renovations from ARPA funding.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number nine, discuss and consider the conditional selection of RXDX for the East Congressman SP Ortiz County Road 44 Bridge Improvement Project.
Motion to approve, Judge.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. This is also precinct three. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number 10, discuss and consider the conditional selection of EP Remodeling Services for LLC for Robstown Recreation Building renovations. Yours as well, Commissioner Modas?
Motion to approve, Judge.
We have a motion to approve. Do you want to second this one?
Second, sure.
We're going back and forth. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number 11, discuss and consider the conditional selection of the Lowbidder Barcom Construction, Inc. for the Nueces County Courthouse and Jail wastewater line replacement. Do you want to talk about that one, Mr. Robinson?
Sure.
This is a conditional selection, too?
Correct.
Yes.
So, we conducted a bid opening on November 5th, and we received two bids, recommendations to conditionally select the Lowbidder Barcom Construction, Inc. for the Nueces County Courthouse and Jail wastewater line replacement under ARPA, IFB number 3304-24. We received a letter from Govent Development, the engineer on the project recommending conditional selection, and Public Works also supports that recommendation.
So I have a question, though.
And I understand that the recommendation will include some value engineering. There were some seven different additive options and configurations that they're going to be considering, and so they will work on that with Public Works and Govent to design exactly what the contract will contain, and that will come back and be brought before the court on December 11th.
Yeah, that was my question, on the seven different additives or amendments or whatever that they do to those, and, and then something like this as well that we've had so much trouble with to begin with, I want to caution anyone in those meetings to understanding once we break into this stuff, we might find all kinds of additional problems that we may have to take care of, so not to overextend ourselves because the county has no additional funds to put towards this project, so, okay. Just my two cents worth. I'll make the motion to pass, and?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes.
If I might, Judge, there's an awful lot of work that went into this particular agenda, some 27 items that my office worked on, and I just want to give a shout out to Jason Parker, my assistant purchasing agent for bids and contracts, my two bids and contract writers, Melinda Malone and Cheryl Crockston. Also, our department heads that we've worked very well with, Juan Pimentel and Bert Perez in his office, and then also Scott Cross in his office, and also Edward for various projects in the outlying areas of the community. The teams worked very well together and had great support from Anna and the Grants Department. Every, every contract has to get reviewed by Grant Works and our legal team, Kent Brown and Holt Feenster in the county attorney's office. Everybody's collaborating, communicating very well in order to bring these things to you guys in the high volume of the ask that was there before us, and so I just want to say thanks to all of those people.
They absolutely deserve that credit because this was a monumental task put before them, and we still have some work to do on these MOUs and things like that, but you all have performed tremendously, been up to my office and answered countless questions every time I called as well, so thank you all, thank your staff, everyone for the amount of work put in to get these moving forward like we're, like we're required, we don't have a choice. This was a requirement, so.
Mrs. Garcia.
Yes. And moving on to item F1 in the auditor's office, receive an update on the Department of Labor investigation and all related matters and take action. We did receive the final report on the Department of Labor investigation. We have already signed that on the amounts. This was on the ARPA premium pay was not included in the overtime rate, and the Department of Labor told us that it should have been included, so we had to make those corrections, and all of it is attached if you need to see any of those corrections.
The Department of Labor's audit period was for two years preceding the audit. The investigation determined that overtime is being calculated correctly in workday. The investigation also determined that overtime was not calculated correctly in one solution as the result of the ARPA retention pay, which was not included in the overtime rate. That it was the determination by the Department of Labor that even though ARPA retention pay was temporary in nature, because it was given as an incentive to retain employees, it should have been included in the overtime rate.
Is there an action we need to do other than to make the motion to approve the paychecks going to these employees that were owed money that didn't receive it, and the backup is there?
We, we just need Commissioners Court's approval to?
To release the checks.
To release the checks. All employees impacted, and we'll need to sign a release for the Department of Labor.
And there's like a November the 17th date on this, on when these need to move forward as well.
That's correct. We have to have checks issued by the, the Department of Labor is requiring that we have the checks issued for the employees?
If they don't pick them up and sign it, that's?
By the 17th, which is a Sunday, so they would be available for employees to begin to pick up on Monday, the 18th.
So what's the specific motion that you need it to be?
I, I, I need Commissioners Court to authorize payment to employees impacted by the Department of Labor investigation.
And a release signed.
And?
And a release signed.
And the release signed by the employees, yes.
Pending a release signed by employees.
Pending release signed by employees.
That would be the motion, thank you.
Second, the motion.
We have a motion and a second for item F1. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number two, approve the budget, project budget amendment number 006.
So moved, Judge.
Um, I, would you also vote to release those checks, early release? I, I don't, we've never had to get an early release for a payroll check, but since it is a check and it's payroll.
We can add that to the motion to make it an early, or it's, it's?
I, I don't think that it requires an early release. Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's payroll.
Payroll doesn't require early release, okay.
And we were told by the Department of Labor we have to do it, so I think that gives us the permission. We have to do it.
I, I respectfully submit project change order number six for your review and approval.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Did we have a second? I thought you did, sorry, Commissioner.
I'll change mine to a second, yeah.
Yes, okay.
That's all right.
I thought I heard you say yes, so. Okay, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Moving on to item three, authorize renewal of the Texas DIR contract with Vertisaw for Open Gov Software, and the amount stays the same, I'm assuming fifty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-two?
Yes, the amount is correct. The attachment, it does indicate on the quote, three-year, that's a typo, it's a one-year quote, and it's a DIR contract, and so the contract wouldn't be amended because we're piggybacking on the state's contract.
So, make the motion to pass a one-year contract only.
It, we had an update to, so that they changed the language, so that it did state one year.
Yes, she came and talked to me before the meeting, so. And the amount of fifty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-five cents would be my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. On item number four, discuss and consider approving the federal equitable sharing agreement and certification for Constable Precinct Three, Constable Precinct Five, District Attorney, and the Sheriff's Office, and I believe this is a regular annual.
That is correct. This is an annual certification of the federal equitable sharing. It's, the internal audit has reviewed the federal agency's annual certification reports and compared the amounts to the general ledger to be accurate. We recommend approving the federal equitable sharing agreement and certification for these agencies. The documents are filed with the U.S. Department of Justice Asset Forfeiture Program and are due November thirtieth.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number five, discuss and consider authorizing and approving the sole source purchase from Superior LLC, Essential Square Company, for One Solution Maintenance Renewal of the One Solution Financial System for Oasis County Auditor's Office in the amount of sixty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty cents. And is this budgeted already in yours?
Yes, I included a budget for the full year, just in case we did need to extend it whenever I did my twenty-four, twenty-five budget request.
Make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number six, discuss and consider authorizing and approving the statement of work number three with Strata U.S. Professional Services for optimization pool services through December twenty twenty-five at a total cost of sixty-six thousand.
Yes, and this is a request for additional hours for development of workday. It's AMS hours. They, we submit requests for additional development. They prepare proposal.
Prepare more reports and things that you need.
Customization as necessary. Yes, this is budgeted.
I'll make the motion to pass. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
One aye. Going back to item twenty-four quickly, on discuss and consider the upcoming Commissioners Court meetings, workshops, and related, we talked about November the nineteenth. I have, we sent everyone a message, and everyone said they were available on the nineteenth in the morning. I have a COG meeting on the nineteenth in the afternoon that they have called unless they change that. Is, I'm, we need to set a meeting to canvass the election. It doesn't need to be, I think, two. Two, and then I would like to add the MOU to get a list of all these projects to make sure that we have them with three MOUs, one with Inland Parks, one with Public Works, and one with HR on our employees, just to have a discussion about those and bring those back on the December eleventh, so it wouldn't be an action item. It would just be a discussing and make sure all of our lists are accurate so that we don't leave something off. I don't know who else said. I know, Commissioner, you've got something in the morning. Was there going to be, Commissioner, I guess we'll just go down the list. Commissioner Hernandez, are you available on the nineteenth in the morning?
Yeah, I have a doctor's appointment. Let me make sure, and I'll let you know.
Commissioner Mottas, are you available on the nineteenth in the morning? I'm available in the morning. I, the COG meeting I have in the afternoon, I'm not sure what time it is, but they've called and asked for a quorum, so I need to attend that one in the afternoon. Commissioner Gonzalez is not. Commissioner Chesney, are you available in the morning on the nineteenth?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we have Edward and Juan attend to go over on the MOUs for you? Commissioner Gonzalez, would that be satisfactory since?
I don't have any to put in the MOUs. I don't have any.
Okay. And I guess the morning of the nineteenth, and we have a quorum here for the canvassing of the election and discussing on the MOUs for the rest of us who have some. The first two meetings, I know we haven't gone over the January agenda, but Teresa and I were looking just so that people were taking holiday trips or anything. The January eighth and the twenty-second would be their meetings, first meetings in January coming up.
I'm sorry, Judge, say that again. I was looking at something.
I just wanted to send a notice out for people who are planning anything. The January eighth and the twenty-second would be the meetings on the Wednesdays, the regularly scheduled meetings coming up in January. Teresa hasn't, she'll be presenting the whole calendar in December. I just wanted to
I just need to get with you. I'm okay with those two. I just need to get with you.
You are, okay.
I didn't write before.
And do we need to have a vote on the meeting for the canvassing the election, or we just stated?
It's already
We're going to post it Thursday, so, okay. Going back to HR, Human Resources, G-one, discuss and consider the approval for extended leave without pay, January, until January second, twenty twenty-five, for the Budget Accounting Supervisor, and this is one that they just extended. It has been on the list. I would make the motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion about it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number two, discuss and consider approval of extended leave without pay while on FEMA deployment, starting November the twelfth, for an estimated thirty-day period for the bids and contract specialists in the purchasing department. Then we
Do we have to vote on this stuff? I thought this stuff was like automatic or
The only reason why we're requesting the court to vote is because any leave after ten consecutive days, leave without pay, after ten consecutive days, has to be approved by the court.
So, I make the motion to pass then. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. IT, H-one, discuss and consider the year five renewal for eight-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand eight-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars with Tyler Technologies for Odyssey S.A.A.S. hosting online from October the first to September twenty twenty-five, and I'm assuming IT's not here. But, oh, yes, sorry. I was like, this is the last year, or is this a five-year renewal thing?
No, it's a six-year.
It's a six-year. There's one more year after this. That was
But it's already budgeted, correct?
Yes, yes.
Motion to pass, Judge.
We have a motion to pass. Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item number two, discuss and consider authorizing Addendum seventy-six to the Master Service Agreement and the product lease schedule of fifty-nine copiers under the buy board contract. This is our RECO copiers in all of the offices. This is a standard procedure. It's just y'all's, have to get it renewed. I'll make the motion to pass. These are all budgeted in each of the offices as well. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Are there any other agenda items that we've passed that we need to go back to? I think the calendar was the only we would be ready to go to executive. I would like to also state that this might be a little bit lengthier executive because the Commissioner has been invited to go square some people in, and he has asked for about thirty minutes additional time, more than our regular normal time, so we will come back after he returns. Item number four, executive session, public notices, given that the Commissioners Court may elect to go into an executive session any time during the meeting to discuss matters listed anywhere on the agenda when authorized by the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code. To the extent there has been a past practice of distinguishing items for public deliberation and for those for executive session, the public is advised that the court is departing from that practice and reserves the right to discuss any listed agenda items in executive session when authorized by law to do so. In the event, the Commissioners Court elects to go into executive session regarding an agenda item, the section or sections of the Open Meetings Act authorizing the executive session will be publicly announced by the presiding officer. In accordance with the authority of the Government Code, Vernon's Texas Code, section five-five-one dot zero seven one, five-five-one dot zero seven two, five-five-one dot zero seven three, five-five-one dot zero seven four, five-five-one dot zero seven four five, five-five-one dot zero seven six, five-five-one dot zero eight six, five-five-one dot zero eight seven, the Commissioners Court will hold an executive session to consult with the attorneys, including matters related to litigation, deliberate regarding real property, prospective gifts, personnel matters, including termination, county advisory bodies, security devices, and/or economic development negotiations, and other matters that may be discussed in an executive session. Upon completion of the executive session, the Commissioners Court may, in an open session, take such action as appropriate on items discussed in an executive session. Item A today is consult with the county attorney regarding legal matters related to Quest Diagnostics Data Transformation Form and Transfer of Biometric and Laboratory Data of Oasis County Employees to Boone Chapman Administrators, Inc., and related matters, Texas Government Code five-five-one dot zero seven one. Discuss, consider, and take action on the same in regular session if needed. Item B, consult with the county attorney and outside counsel in regards to the Corpus Christi Palmer's Tax Abatement Agreement. Discuss and consider taking action on the same during regular meeting and all related matters, Texas Government Code five-five-one dot zero seven one. And item C, discuss and consider the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of the Oasis County Director of Human Resources, Texas Government Code five-five-one dot zero seven one, and take action in the same open session if necessary. Is there any other item on the agenda that we need to bring in to executive? That being said, it is eleven forty-three, and we are going to executive session, and we will be I will cause meeting back to order from executive. We have a little out of order. We may have one thing, but on item four A, an executive, I'd like to make the motion denying the request for county approval of the data transmission agreement between Quest Diagnostics and Boone Chapman Benefit Administrators. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. We have another motion that is coming up in a minute, but we're going to break with schedule and do our adjournments in memory while we are waiting for some document and paperwork. And I think, Commissioner Chesney, you had two?
Yes, ma'am. First one is Alicia Barr, fifty-seven, of Port Aransas, passed away of complications from lung cancer on Friday, November first, at Corpus Christi Hospital. Celebration of life will be held at six p.m. on Thursday, November fourteenth, at the Big Pavilion at Roberts Point Park. Pizza and dessert will be provided. Alicia was born on March twenty-seventh, nineteen sixty-seven, in Borger, Texas. She and her family moved to Port Aransas in nineteen seventy-one. She graduated from Port Aransas High School in nineteen eighty-five, went on to work for many years in various jobs in hospitality industry, and was manager of Moore McDonald VFW Post eighty-nine sixty-seven in Port Aransas. She was a wonderful mother, daughter, sister, and friend. She was preceded by her mother in death, Shirley Barr. She survived by her two sons, Curtis James McLendon of Rockport and Trevor McLendon of Pensacola, Florida, a stepson, Dylan McLendon of North Padre Allen, stepdaughter, Lindsey, I'm sorry, Lindsey Leslie of Longview, her father Jimmy Barr of Port Aransas, two brothers, Verrel Barr of Port Aransas and Alan Barr of Rockport, a nephew Colin Barr of New Brunswick, a niece Jamie Barr of Port Aransas, and a grandnephew Jackson Barr of Port Aransas. The family asked them, "Lou of Flowers, donations be made to the Moore McDonald VFW Post eighty-nine sixty-seven." The second one that I have is John Johnny Richard Mendaleski. He departed on his final charter, October sixth, twenty twenty-four, at the age of seventy. Though he may have left his fiscal body, his lifelong legacy is merely just beginning. Legends never die. Each unforgettable day would end with sun-kissed cheeks that were sore from laughing or from attempting to eat the frozen Snickers he tossed at you earlier. He had a way of telling jokes that kept you on the edge of your seat and always executed the punchline flawlessly. Knowing he had a fish on the line, Johnny would yell five dollars on the first fish. Moments later, he would set his hook and let out his infectious laugh. The full box of fish was merely the cherry on top of getting a day out with Captain John. If someone complained during a slow day, he would nonchalantly respond with, "There's tissues in the glove box." In his younger years, Johnny's nomadic heart took him on adventures around the world for many months at a time. Adventures like road tripping to El Salvador, Mexico, in search of the best surf break, or spending the summer building log cabins in rural Wyoming, and where he also worked as a rodeo clown. In the end, it was his love for the Laguna Madre that always guided him back home. Maybe it was Laguna, or maybe it was a beautiful lady bartending at Star Street who always caught his eye. In two thousand seven, I'm sorry, on March fifteenth, nineteen ninety, I'm sorry, I'm getting completely out of line, I apologize. The family asked that she never stopped telling stories about Johnny, celebrate what was and what is yet to come, cherish the memories of him and walk in his wise footsteps, and we reach, when you reach for the tissues, just remember they're in the glove box. He survived by many nieces and nephews who are left with countless memories of him, Austin, Ron Junior, Joe, John, Jason Page, Farrah deceased, Jenny, Maggie, Ashley, Amanda, Crystal, Colin, Corbin, Nicolette, Trey, Benton, Margaret, and Betsy. On behalf of the Mendaleski family, they want to give thanks to Blanca and Maria, who sacrificed their time selfishly to make him comfortable in the end. They're very thankful to the army of dedicated friends that always showed up. We pass on our condolences to the family of Johnny Mendaleski, and certainly to his sister, Mary, who I grew up with here in Corpus Christi. Thank you.
Are there any other adjournments in memory today? Commissioner Chesney, you maybe should.
I don't have anything. Do I have something, Jenny?
May I approach?
Yes.
As long as you're going to be nice. Just that?
Yeah.
Judge, I have a motion to terminate the Human Resources Director for Cause based on inefficiency, violation of the provisions or the rules and regulations of the Commissioners Court, the Appointing Authority, or the Civil Service Commission, and failure to meet the performance standards and exceptions and expectations of the positions. Is that all I need to read, Jenny?
I believe so. Commissioner, you've listed three items out of the personnel manual for which third-level discipline, up to include termination, is an option.
Right, and in addition to the motion, should it pass, I would also include in the motion that Melinda Roberson would be named the acting HR Director at the pay level that that dictates.
We have a motion and a second by Commissioner Mottas. All those in favor say aye.
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 One aye, four ayes. Are you, Commissioner Hernandez, I'm sorry, did I misspeak?
Also no.
Also a no? Okay. Three ayes, two nos, so. The motion passes. Are there any other items on the agenda, adjournments, anything? Then it is three oh three, and I would say this meeting is adjourned.